This study session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at this meeting are School Board members Superintendent Kent Pachel, a non-voting ex-oficio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Anne Kramer. Ms. Kramer, will you please call the roll?
Director Byler?
Here.
Director Whitmore?
Here.
Director Lawson?
Here.
Director Marvin?
Here.
Chair Nathan?
Here.
Director Whitehorn?
Here.
Vice Chair Wirth?
Here.
The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America. To the Lord who commands us, who commands us, who governs us, who governs us with justice for all. Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at RochesterSchools.org/assembly. Item 3.1 is a monitoring item, religious holidays and 2027-2028 RPS calendar design. Superintendent Pachel?
Thank you Chair Nathan, and Board members. As Board members will recall, on a number of occasions, we've had, two that I recall, students come to comments to the Board and urge the Board to consider not holding school on certain religious holidays. And in both instances, it was a student whose family and presumably that student practices the Muslim faith, and they were talking in particular about the holiday of Eid. But Board members, in discussing those opportunities, suggested that we should take a broader look at our calendar and religious holidays. And so we've waited for a point at which we are early enough to influence the development of future school calendars, which of course, the Board ultimately approves every year, to have a conversation intentionally in a study session, to present you with some ideas and options in responding to that. When we began this process, I actually thought I might be here recommending that we not hold school on certain religious holidays. As you've seen, if you've read the presentation, or as Will Ruffin II will outline for you now, that is not, in fact, our recommendation. And we can talk more about that. There are two primary reasons. One, that RPS actually now does not hold, or not hold, school on any religious holidays that our district chooses to recognize. Christmas is a federal holiday, and so that is not an RPS decision about a religious holiday. And the more I looked at the complexity of recognizing the religious holidays of certain faiths and not others, the more I got concerned about how, in a wonderfully diverse district like ours, we adequately embrace all of those traditions while, of course, keeping the separation of the church and state that is foundational to our system. And so, working with Will and Carl Bakken, and then they've reached out to some other colleagues across the district, we have a different proposal for you here that I think does recognize that, in particular, the two faiths that we've heard about most often. I mentioned the two public comment experiences that came to the Board. I've also had discussion with local rabbi and members of the RPS community who practice the Jewish faith about some Jewish holidays. And so we have a proposal here that I think would recognize the importance of allowing students not to be in school on those days without canceling school and establishing a precedent that might be complicated over time. The final point I would make before I turn it over to Will is that, should you want to revisit the idea of not holding schools on a certain date, and not holding school for students on certain dates, we would certainly be pleased to bring you back a specific recommendation along those lines. The recommendation, after a lot of thought, that I have brought here is the one that Will has helped to develop and he's going to outline for you now. Should you choose to do that, I would be strongly recommending that we do not reduce our instructional days. We would need to add days later in the calendar year. We simply can't go lower in our instructional minutes. But that is not the proposal that's before us tonight. So I want to thank Will for the leadership that he's shown in helping think through a complex issue and let him walk you through our thinking on this. And then, our goal tonight really is just to get the pulse of the Board on this issue, and then certainly I'll work with the Chair and Vice Chair in figuring out next steps, if any, that would come to a regular meeting. Will, thank you.
Thank you Chair Nathan, and Superintendent Pachel for that introduction. I would like to do an idea to just provide some of the background and context, and context for how we got here today. Oh, thank you. You need the receiver in order to make the video work. Thanks, Anne. So, like Superintendent Pachel said, there's been a number of students who have come before us and asked me if we can consider taking Eid off as a non-student day. And we committed to them to investigate this and see if this is actually feasible. Upon the investigation, we learned that there's actually some state statute already out there that says the district must make reasonable efforts to accommodate student absences for religious observances, but including allowing the students to make up any missed work without penalty. And then I think that's where the problem lies, because the responsibility is still on the student to make up the work. So they would then have to make up any previous work that they missed and stay current with their current work. And for some, they've mentioned that that's a pretty heavy burden for them to carry. So here's some of the rationale. Again, like Superintendent Pachel, we have two prominent faiths, traditions that our students in RPS follows. It's the Muslim and the Jewish faith. So we're recognizing that within our school district. We're also focusing on equity and inclusion and ensuring that our students aren't missing any major work or being penalized for their absences. So if you think about it, if there is a school field trip on that day that they're off, that was a one-off, they cannot make that experience up. That's just an experience that they have to miss. That's unfair for those students. And then lastly, it provides clarity for our staff, so all of us will be on board with the same expectation across the district. So what is the proposal? And here it is. This part I will read aloud. The Superintendent recommends that RPS adopts the following approach to religious holidays that are not federal holidays for the 2026-2027 and 2027-2028 school years. When the following religious or cultural holidays fall on a school day, teachers in schools will not schedule or administer major assessments or events, which include tests and quizzes, major student presentations, due dates for significant projects, schoolwide assemblies, or field trips. And it's important to note that no action needs to be taken by the Board tonight for us to implement this approach, but the School Board could adopt a resolution that would solidify and support the Superintendent's decision to take this approach on. So what are we talking about here? So for the next couple of years, we're looking at Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Eid al-Fitr, and Eid al-Ahada. And luckily for us, a couple of them already fall on non-student days. So we're really talking about Yom Kippur and Eid al-Hadá. So, the first one, Yom Kippur, occurs towards the beginning of the school year, September 21st, and the latter falls towards the ending of the school year in May 17, on May 17. The same pattern holds true for the following school year of 2027-2028, where Yom Kippur is held in October, which is a little bit later. And then we have Eid, following the same pattern of being held in May. So how did we get input for this? There were individual conversations had with staff across the district, just to kind of gauge their thoughts on, what if we were to do something like this? The proposal was actually sent to district leadership last month, so that was central office staff, operational office staff, and building leaders, asking about if they foresee any concerns or what the potential barriers may be to adopting this proposal. There were only a couple of responses that came back, and they both were about if further conversations need to be had with the Minnesota Sports High School League for students who were participating in events that happen after school. And then lastly, here we are today with the School Board Study Session. And the decision was to put it as a study session so that we can actually have a conversation about it, instead of being limited to time during the regular School Board Session. Upon a research, we did find that there was an alternative approach that some districts in Minnesota have taken, and that's canceling school altogether. So Hopkins, Minneapolis Public Schools, and Mankato Public Schools, around the year 2022-2023, have all decided to cancel school on those days. And like Superintendent said, I think we should note again, if RPS does adopt this approach, the Superintendent would be recommending that we add days on to the school calendar, instead of just canceling those days off. Here's some of the challenges to that approach. The dates are estimates, so the actual date can fluctuate depending on the lunar calendar. The Islamic calendar, like I said, is lunar, which means the months begin based on the actual sighting of the crescent moon. So with that, the date can fluctuate a day or two in either direction. And for families trying to adjust on a school day that's been canceled on the fly, that can provide some challenges in real time. So before I end, here are some points that I think we should consider for the conversation tonight. Does this proposal align with the values of RPS? And we recently just adopted six. I think it aligns with two of them, one being supporting the whole student, and the other being building belonging and connection. Another thing we would have to consider is how will we get the word out to our RPS community? Future considerations. What if other faith groups decide to offer a proposal as well? How will we walk down that path? And then lastly, the Board's feedback. So thinking about your immediate questions or concerns or any suggested modifications to the proposal, I will now stop here and open up for conversation. Thanks for listening.
I have a couple things. I was waiting on this one. So, first I, so first I'm starting with my, with the concerns that I have. I have a few concerns. My first concern is that, in still having school with the restrictions that we'll put on the class day, you don't know, major class trips or tests or quizzes, how do you measure if what's being taught that day, the importance of that instructional time, right? So depending on what class a kid is in at that time, or the complexity of the chapter they're in, even though they're not given a test that day, there is no way of us saying that we're not putting a student behind, because we're having teachers continue to teach. I just don't see a way to have school go on and not end up in the situation where a kid has to do some backup work, right? So that's my first concern. I'll just list them off real quick. Secondly, I don't think it's fair to the staff, because there's staff that celebrate those holidays, and have we thought of how we will accommodate the staff that celebrate those holidays? So if the students don't have to be there, the staff should also not have to be there. And are we able to allow that number of staff that may identify for those religious off on that day? Because my concern, my consideration would be, we're creating a situation where we just end up with kids having a playdate, because I feel we may end up in a position where we either don't have enough staff to staff that day, because they should also get the same accommodations and respect to take their holiday off, or we may end up in a position where we have teachers that are teaching important things on that day, which is also not fair to the students that aren't there, or the teachers that have to reteach an important lesson because half their class is not there. My suggestion is that I do think the school should close, personally. I think that creates the fairer situation, and I do agree that we can add the additional days. And again, I'm just saying this in all fairness, coming from living in a different region. On the East Coast, we did have all the major, three major holidays off, so no student ever had that concern. And as far as the holidays that don't have a set date, I mean, what is often done is there's an observation day. So like, if it's on a Sunday, you know, that, you know, we respect that that following day, that Monday. I understand that there's a rotating holiday, but I, being that other districts do this, I'm sure that they either choose a day that's as close as possible. I mean, obviously, to Mr. Ruffin's point, we can't close the school on the fly, but I think that adds more to the belonging. They're well aware that their calendars don't sync up, and I think, I would rather give them the day before off, and you know, maybe we missed the mark, but it's not an intentional miss, you know, it's due to a, you know, a calendar thing. And I would feel more respected saying, okay, we're observing your holiday though, on this day, because we do have other, even federal holidays that float, and we have an observation, you know, day like MLK Day, if it falls on a Sunday, we observe it the Monday, or what have you. So I don't, I don't, I don't think that would be an issue. But those are my list of concerns that I'm going to get out the way, but I think those are things that we should seriously consider. And I guess, I mean, are we just, what is the instructional quality going to be for the kids that are in class, while teachers are trying to skirt around not teaching anything too important, or not teaching anything that can be viewed as a bias, because I taught this really important thing on another holiday? I mean, I don't, I'd rather not have my kids on a playdate, you know, and have the additional educational instruction.
Yeah, thank you Director Whitehorn. There's a lot there, and I hope I hit those points. We would not have a playdate. Our staff would continue, as they always do, to provide instruction. And if a kid misses instruction, our staff are very good at helping them make that up. That's different than a test, field trip, or assembly. So you're right, it would not be a freebie, but we do have many students now, we immediately give excused absences for anyone who calls in those days, and so they make that up. There's an important point. In terms of staff, we did, apparently, I was somewhat surprised. This was a longstanding request from our Rochester's Education Association to provide staff with time off for religious holidays, and I was very pleased to immediately accept that in our last round of negotiations with them, which the Board subsequently approved. So staff absolutely have the chance to take that off. The point about, and this is very specific to Eid, a holiday that moves. We didn't do a formal survey, in part because, of course, we don't keep records of kids' religions. But the feedback we got from equity specialists and others was actually, in fact, that the observed day, in quite a few of the conversations I had, which is about a year ago, was that it was not appreciated as a recognition. If it was an observed day, not on the day, that it was on the day, because that, there's literally millennia of tradition about when the forces of nature identify that date. Now that, I couldn't speak, and obviously I'm not, you know, of that faith, but that was a real point of division, as whether you could have it. It's on a Monday, even if it's actually happening on another. So there was a complexity there. And as I mentioned, if the Board would like a proposal for the days off, that absolutely is something that we can put into motion, and it's different than the initial proposal I'm bringing you tonight. But I have a lot of sympathy for all the points that you are making. This is a, it's a challenging call. I think we're good on the staff piece, because we absolutely respect our, you know, rights of our staff to be gone. The instructional, you know, the quality of, we would have to trust our teachers to have high-quality learning, but not something they're giving a test on for that. And then there is that additional point of, should we move to the date specific? A real divergence of opinion as to whether you would do that. I know one year Minneapolis literally said, I don't know if Will, if that's how they've handled it, but they literally said, you're not going to know what day is off until we know when the holiday is scheduled. And, you know, that does have a lot of dominoes for transportation, food service, things like that, that you usually schedule really far in advance. But thank you for those really, I understand the other side of this totally.
Director Marvin?
Thank you. Yeah, Director Whitehorn, I, thank you for being thoughtful about the kids and about the teachers. I think this is a really smart proposal that will work well. Our teachers, as Dr. Pachel said, know how to help kids get work made up. I mean, we have kids sick or gone for sports or other things all the time. And teachers know that part of their responsibility is to ensure that that child gets the best education they can, and to help them with that. The idea, I think what this does is show those communities that we respect and honor their faith and their wanting to celebrate or, you know, to practice their faith. And we should do that for every child and every religion in this community. My concern about saying, take these days off, is that, I think you alluded to this, then when does it end? Does that mean that every religious group will say, we need these days off? And it's just going to get to be really tough, I think, to schedule our school year. But I think this is a very specific way of saying, we respect you, we respect what you believe, we honor your request, and we will do everything we can to ensure that you're not penalized for being gone. We won't, we'll ask teachers also to respect that, and your fellow students to respect that, that on these days, we're not going to plan a major project, a big test, or whatever. So I think it's a really good compromise.
Director Marvin, I appreciate what you said, Director Whitehorn, and also Director Marvin. I guess one of my concerns with having an observation day is that the students would also then take off the actual day. So then, you're going to be having a day off for everyone, and then you're going to have a bunch of kids off the actual day, and then would teachers be told, well, when we know what the actual day is, you can't penalize anybody, because some of them may be gone, because they don't want an observation day. So I could see it getting a little bit more complicated by doing that.
Good additional point.
Does the district currently have, is there sort of any precedent for having days like this, where there are certain days due to whatever else is going on in the community or in the school system, where we instruct staff to not have field trips or schoolwide assemblies and similar?
Thank you Director Cook. We certainly do that on exam times. So that's probably the closest to it. I'm not aware of any other days where we essentially say, don't schedule tests and things like that. We did find other districts that have done this, and have instituted this approach in Minnesota and nationally. I also do know, to Director Whitehorn's point, there are other districts that have longstanding had these days off, so there's trade-offs on both sides. It was in looking at the fact that there are other districts that have essentially taken this approach, that led me to work with Will and Carl and others to take a look at it and bring us to this discussion point tonight. But no, we don't have, I think, extensive precedent. I don't know, I often go to Jackie as the, like, resident current historian. I think I'm not misspeaking, that we don't have other examples of kind of test-free, field trip-free days right now.
So that's helpful context, and I certainly appreciate the proposal. I, my reservation with it right now is, I think the last thing that we want to do as a Board, as a system, is to signal that school is not important, and that there's days you don't have to be there. We struggle with that already. And Rosh Hashanah, I believe, is a two-day holiday, so on the years, you know, the next couple of school years, that happens to fall over the weekend. But, and the one Eid is, I think, almost always in the summer. I'm not totally sure, but, you know, if it's four days, that's kind of a lot. And then, to the point of some of the other Directors here, just to take an example from my organization, which, you know, every organization has to be sort of responsive to the cultural observations that are relevant to that entity. And in mine, observations in the Hindu faith are very important, because that's a huge constituency in the place that I work. And so, next Monday is Diwali, which is extremely important, and will certainly be recognized in lots of places in the world. But it, and including in Rochester, I'm sure. I just, I struggle a little bit with this idea of picking out particular religions to recognize. Certainly Christianity is also widely practiced, and in a way, for the calendar purposes, that we're maybe fortunate that most significant Christian holidays happen to fall on Sundays, or days when school doesn't meet anyhow, but not all of them. Good Friday is recognized in plenty of places. It's not a state holiday in Minnesota, but there's plenty of places where it is. And it just, I don't know. I'm not sure, I appreciate the points, and maybe this is a sensible middle ground, but I have real reservations about constraining what the school is going to do, what we're going to offer for students on particular days, and to the extent that sends a signal that, hey, this isn't really an important day. It's kind of like a, it's a school day with an asterisk, you know? Show up if you want, but if you don't, no harm, no foul. I don't think we want to be sending that signal. So I would hesitantly support this proposal, but with real reservations.
Thank you. Well, a couple of things. One, even though I think within the presentation, there was an indication that a couple of students had brought this forward, had testified before the Board, and yet, I'm sure they were just a small amount of the possibly hundreds of RPS students who actually participate. I applaud them in their expression of faith. Similar, as I do the young presenter from a couple Board meetings ago, when she inquired about the Christian flag, and had questions about that in regards to other display flags. I do appreciate within the presentation, under the rationale, I think, I want to make sure I have this correct, points to consider, point three, future considerations, I thought that was important, because it's not that we are saying, these are the two, but in essence, this is a result of these particular students or faith groups reaching out to RPS for consideration. I will say, growing up and attending schools in the state of Alaska, the Christian holidays, we didn't have spring break, it was Easter break. We didn't have holiday break, it was Christmas, okay? And somehow, we kind of... And somehow we kind of, you know, took the price out of those holidays. But that being said, I do think that by having the option available to, I don't know if we're waiting to hear back from other religious or cultural groups within our community or we will assume a role advocacy and reach out to them. I don't know what the intent is or plan, if there is one regarding this, but I would probably prior to implementation, if this were to reach that point for consideration and possible voting, would like to maybe hear results of that outreach if at all possible. And then finally, I do recognize that presently, and perhaps if you wouldn't mind, Superintendent, or I don't want to obligate a member of your cabinet, but could you possibly speak to what actually happens real-time for those students who want to participate? What are they doing presently or what is happening or occurring?
Superintendent.
Yeah, thank you, Director Barlow, and I do want to invite my colleagues if there's anything you want to add. At present, we immediately excuse any parent who calls in their student for the reason of religious observance for any holiday. There's no further information required. Since I've been here, we have disseminated that pretty aggressively, said you can be excused for these, you know, holidays. And as I mentioned, as, as of our last contract with REA, the same applies to staff. So essentially, it's a immediate excused absence. If the student is gone for the religious observance and the parent doesn't call, in my experience, our staff in following up, we always ask, "Why did you miss school?" And if they say it was for this, well, you know, we need your parent to just to say that was excused. The parental excuse is still in place, but we have been very aggressive in trying to make sure people know that it's an excused absence. So that's our current state. In terms of additional public input, it's important to note too that this was, bringing this to you in this study session was my effort to be responsive to the two points we've heard from a number of folks. So, and I always believe it's my job to give you a recommendation, not just present a problem and say, "What do you guys want to do?" So that's why there's a recommendation here. Right now, we haven't planned further public input on this question, though that doesn't mean we couldn't do that. It really is looking for the board to say, "How much is this something the board would like to be directly engaged in?" Obviously, if we're going to have days off, you approve the calendar. So in that instance, you are the deciding, and we aren't yet at the point where we're bringing you a calendar recommendation. If we chose to take the approach I've outlined here, that certainly is within my authority as superintendent to direct staff not to do tests, field trips. As Will mentioned, the board could choose to endorse it with a resolution, but that would not be required. And so it really does come down to wanting to hear the, it's a study session, so obviously you're not voting tonight, but the broad directions that you're interested in taking is board. And again, I just want to be really clear, this is one where I understand both, both sides of this for sure.
And Madam Chair, if I may ask a follow-up. Then in that presently, they are excused absences with that students are able to, while they perhaps could not make up a field trip, they could make up whatever academic rigor they may have lost out on and/or testing that they perhaps were looking forward to participating in. And so is that not working when the surveys or inquiries went out to our students where they, did they, was there any indication that having excused access was not working for them? If so, I would be curious, that's why it wasn't.
Superintendent.
Yeah, thank you, Director Barlow. I have received no feedback from students or parents that that is not working. This recommendation is to take it a step further so that in the case of tests, quizzes, field trips, major assemblies, they, they aren't missing those things. Because those things in our current situation could happen on those dates. The kid would be, a student would be excused and have the chance to make it up. This proposal would essentially say that those things are not happening. Again, I do think it's really important, there are many, 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 many valuable ways of learning that do not involve tests, quizzes, assemblies or field trips. So it is not true that, should we take this approach, it would be a freebie day. I have to be honest, I'm going to ask not to suggest that further. I think it's insulting to our staff. So just to be real honest about that, we don't need to suggest that if we tell an educator with whom we are entrusting the education of our children that they can't get a test, that they're going to think, "Well, then I'm doing nothing for the day." I believe our educators can understand that tension, should we take, move in this direction.
Thank you.
Director White, uh, Director Whitehorn.
I raised a question in the Q and A document that I don't think we necessarily touched on yet. I, I now understand a little bit more that this is more about the academic day and not about things like extracurricular activities. But can you talk about how those schedules are done? Do coaches and advisors take into account various holidays or how does that work on a day-to-day basis?
Superintendent.
And Will and Carl definitely jump in. The State High School League is largely agnostic to these things to date, and so we don't control those dates. And so that's one reason why the extracurriculars are not addressed in this, because at least in terms of those things. We also didn't include, you know, all extracurriculars, or I didn't include this and Will and Carl agreed, because students are choosing to do those extracurriculars, whereas the school day is compulsory. And so a student is choosing to be in speech or in theater or go to after-school enrichment and the parent presumably. And then they could choose not to go that day quite clearly, they wouldn't be missing something. I would hope that the State High School League would be attentive to things like this on these dates, but that's something that, to my knowledge, there's not a formal approach to. And we also, of course, don't set those dates, which is the, the driving force behind our extracurriculars, but not all of those extracurriculars.
And I guess I was looking at it more for like, you know, if there's a sports team, if they miss practice on Tuesday, they can't play on Friday or something like that, if that kind of thing is considered by the various activities.
Yeah, it's a, thank you, Director Barlow, that's a great point. We did talk about that. We would make very clear that the requirement that some teams have, that if you skip school, you can't go to practice or to play in a game, would not apply here. That this would be like an excused absence, in which case they can always play, you know, in that game. It's, the, the teams that have established a expectation that you're not in school, you aren't suiting up, are unexcused absences.
Director. Um, I, I find this conversation very interesting, and I don't exactly remember which decade this happened in the Rochester Public Schools, but we used to try and keep spring break either the week before Easter or the week after Easter. But since Easter can vary anywhere between March 22nd and April 25th, sometimes, you know, that spring vacation would have been practically at the end of the school year. So we established it's like at the very end of March, first part of April, that that's where spring vacation is always. Sometimes Easter coincides with it, sometimes not. And I think initially there might have been a little bit of feedback from the community, but once again, you know, for a student who wanted to observe Good Friday, that wasn't an issue because, like you said, it was an excused absence. So I just thought I'd add that little bit of history to our conversation.
I take personal privilege to answer, ask some questions that I have. What are we hearing from staff about these guid, this guidance? Are we, are we hearing that it makes the situation easier because they know what to do on specific days where students are missing? Does it change significantly their current practices?
As Will mentioned, we sent out this proposal to administrators and received very limited feedback, most of which focused on the question of extracurriculars actually. So this is not something that we have sought broader feedback on. Also, you know, same question with Director Barlow. But of course, by design, this is a study session in which we're not asking you to take action tonight. And so that, that would always be something, were we asking you to take a vote, that presumably there would be certainly more analysis and potentially more feedback, but for the purposes of this discussion, we wanted to be responsive to the previous discussions the board has had about this and bring you an option to look at rather than just coming and restating the problem. So I hope that answers your question. I, I, I would not be able to accurately assess the perspective that our staff might have. I'm confident that they could implement this if it's the approach that we take effectively. It's well within the realm of all of our teachers to plan a high-quality day but not give a test or a field trip.
And my next, my next question was, we've made the recommendation for the next two school years, and I think I understand that that might be because those are the next calendars that we're creating. But why wouldn't we establish the, the guidance? We could put it in a policy 503 or procedure 503A and then just change the, the dates of the, the holidays, right? Could we have the guidance and then the dates until, like, why just the next two years? Are we thinking of doing it for a pilot or why not, why not just make it part of our practice?
The calendar is always an annual decision, and so actually, in giving two years, it was an effort to give somewhat more clarity in advance than when we bring you a calendar proposal year to year. I think this would give us a chance to see if this recognition is meaningful to the people who participate in that, those religious traditions, to see if there are other religious traditions that, you know, haven't come forward in the limited feedback we've gotten to date that led to this discussion that we should consider. Director Cook just mentioned one of them. It would also give us the chance to consider this tied to what frankly I hope will come out of our next strategic plan, which is a significant rethinking of how we use the calendar in general. We are still in RPS right now, very constrained by time. Time for work with kids, we've talked about it tied to literacy, time for staff development, it's a constant concern for Mona and her team. Now, time's money, but I think there is, I hope, the possibility of significant creativity in our school calendar and our school schedule tied to the academic agenda of our next strategic plan. And so this could be something that would be considered as part of that larger rethinking. I know that we've, we've shared with the board that we engaged this year in what we called interest-based bargaining with the negotiating team from the Rochester Education Association. And the way that works is you all brainstorm the big, big issues that are out there and then you decide which ones you can tackle and which ones should be in the contract. The lack of time was a unanimously agreed-upon gigantic problem on both sides. It was not something we decided we could address through the contract that you have now approved, but nobody around the table thought, "Oh, we've got the calendar that meets, meets our kids' educational needs, that meets our staff's needs, that, you know..." So I think that's a, that's a somewhat less practical reason to, to put this in place for a couple of years, as it might be folded into some larger rethinking of how we, how we calendar out our schools.
Director Breckwood.
Okay, so I just want to, I want to just make a small clarification. So when I was speaking, I was speaking to a larger number, Superintendent. So I wasn't saying that the educators would not have something for the students to do, but my thought process was more along the lines, if I have thirty kids in my class and sixteen are not there, is it, does it even make sense, you know, for me to do whatever I did have planned? And, and having been in instructional classrooms, some of us have, where for different reasons, a majority of a classroom calls off, the teachers are very versatile in giving those students something to do, but sometimes it turns into more of a study hall or, you know, you can ask some of your deeper questions. So I'm not saying that the instructors will not be doing anything on that day, but depending on what attendance looks like, I would anticipate that instructors would pivot, right? Because it, it just is the, the logical thing to do if you have X amount of students who you gotta, in essence, reteach the lessons, lesson to, right? So that's why I made the consideration of staff and not saying that there may, there would probably be plenty of classrooms that are full and just go on as a normal day, but they may also be situations where there are classes where there are a significant number of students that are out. So my solution based in this, so I do apologize for calling it a freebie or what have you, but that was more my thought process, is that some classes may end up being more study hall-ish depending on the number of students that are participating in that religious practice, which we don't have an exact number on per class. And also with the educators thinking in fairness, right? So you don't want to have some, you know, you want to kind of keep it fair. But anyway, that was my, that was what I was implying, not that the staff cannot accommodate for makeup just in the event that makeup is not the most logical answer. But my thought with all of this, being that we are very data-driven, is do we have the numbers? So how many students actually miss or, I mean, we should be able to pull the attendance for these holidays. And in the event that there, I don't know, I don't know what a good percentage is, twenty-seven percent, let's say twenty-seven percent of kids call in on these days, does it then make sense to say, "Well, we have a significant number of students that are already not here because of the holiday, why would we keep the school open?" Now, not saying that I agree with everybody's point of, you know, there are several other religions that are not mentioned, but again, to the point of me really trying to be staff-friendly, you know, if the percentage of kids is smaller, it's a lot easier to catch up one or two kids than I got nine or eleven kids in this class that are all going to miss, if that makes sense. So I guess my thought is, do we have the numbers? Do we know percentage-wise how many kids are missing for these holidays? I think that answers all of the questions that we would have because we know what day those holidays are and we'd be able to see, do we have thirty-five percent of RPS students not attending on that day already and how much staff are we already not having on that day? I just think that's one way to come to the conclusion on what makes sense as far as having this, you know, having it be open or, or closed is based on the data.
Superintendent.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Director Whitehorn. We, we certainly could pull that. I was, I don't want to pull it on the fly and, and do it too quickly. As we saw at the last board meeting in, focused on the language access plan, because to some extent, language may be a proxy, in particular for Somali students of being the Muslim faith, we're certainly talking about far less than twenty-seven percent of students who would identify in that group, but we absolutely could pull what our absence dates have been on those dates, if that's something that the board would like to take a look at. And we could do that as part of a next step in the process if the board would like us to move forward with that.
Director Mark.
You know, I think it's important for us-
Oh, I'm sorry, Will, did you have one for that last question?
Yeah, I just, I would add that no matter what the percentage is, we won't know if that data's accurate or not, because what the students are struggling with is, should I go to school today or not? And if there's a test or if there's a major activity, they're deciding to go, even if they are practicing that faith. So whatever the numbers come back, we will still not know if it's accurate or not, because the students have an individual struggle that they're going through in their heads or with their families, and there's no way to accommodate for that with the numbers.
Can I made, so a caveat to that could be, we pull the younger students' numbers, because the older students would have a little bit more control over whether or not they're attending for holidays, tests or sports, but maybe we'd get a, a better idea, you know, if we polled, and I'm just throwing something out there, you know, the younger kids who maybe don't have the level of commitment as, you know, some of our high school students have with maybe games or, like you said, tests or projects that are scheduled on those days, whereas I know younger students of, you know, five, six, seven, if you're not going because we're celebrating, you're not, you know, you know what I mean? Maybe we are considerate of the populations, just like how we have the other numbers, we see certain trends with older students, maybe not younger students. So maybe I would like to see that data for the age groups and those dates that we know. That I think that would be good, good data for us to know. And it may also show we have spikes in other religions that we're not considering. You know, there may be a spike of kids that are off for the Hindu holidays or something. I, I think that we could base our decision a little bit off of. of the, the data that we have, since we already are in attendance on those days. So we could know, are we actually, are children actually losing instructional time if we do or don't do this, or consider another.
Director Marvin?
No, I think it's important to remember that our students and their families have been doing this for years. On those days, kids are gone, and they're gone for good reasons. And I think what this does is just say, and we respect your right to not attend school on that day. I, I have real concerns about canceling school for everybody, because not only are we short then on the number of instructional days, but it throws especially families with younger kids, it's chaotic then. They have to figure out, what are we gonna do with our kids on these days? So, um, students' families and the students themselves have every right, whether it's Good Friday, or Rosh Hashanah, or any other religious day, to have an excused absence and to worship the way they want to worship. I think what this does that's a little bit different from what we've done traditionally is just give teachers a head up in advance. It's gonna be these two days this year that you can expect students are gonna be gone. We know that you will help them get caught up, just as you always do for any reason when kids are gone. But just you could, maybe you can plan better so it's not adding extra pressure to those kids, because you're not gonna have them schedule a presentation for them that day or a field trip. It's two days, and I think it's absolutely reasonable, respectful, and a, a good compromise.
So as I look at the, the events that are listed, and I look at the days for next year, I see that one falls on Friday the fifth, and then we also have one September the twenty-first, one's on May the seventeenth, which are the seasons of homecoming and prom. So could we, could we say that, like, because homecoming's a whole week, right? And are those the kinds of events we also don't wanna penalize students for missing? I mean, it's not, it's not a penalty, it's an experience that they wouldn't be able to share if they weren't there.
I think with homecoming, no, because that's tied to the games, generally speaking. With prom, potentially, that broadens this proposal from the academic to the, not just extracurricular, but like cultural and things. So we certainly could take a, a look at that as to whether that would be something. I, I don't, I think that'd be pretty rare that that would be happening, but it's not impossible. We could obviously take a look at that. When I say homecoming, of course, I mean your homecoming is tied by, tied, tied by the game, and so that does make it an issue.
And I know it doesn't affect any of the dates this year, but I do think I've heard of other districts that have issues with their scheduling of graduation on a, a day when, when it's holidays now.
I, I know since I've been here, we've been very attentive to avoid that. We've tried to avoid it on, just with anything we've scheduled centrally. This is kind of a thing, just Director Marvin was saying, taking it to the classroom and saying, like, you know, but yeah, we, we certainly would continue to be, even if, even if we don't do a, anything, we would continue to look as best we ever can at things like graduation.
Any other questions for this? Oh, or Mr. Effer?
Thank you. I, I just wanna add that. We got here today because of the students. It was the students' request that got us here today. It wasn't us sitting around trying to figure out how we can throw a wrench in everyone's night. But we got here because of the students. And today, tonight, is exactly what was supposed to happen. We need to see this from all angles and figure out how we convince some of our students. So to me, listening to the conversation is a success, because all of those angles were mentioned. But we have to remember that we got here today because of the students. We're trying to empower the students and give them voice and have them advocate, advocate for the things that are important to them. And that's what's been happening over the last couple of years. And then now we're actually doing something about it. So I just wanted to cement us in that. We're here because of the students, and we're reacting because of our students. We haven't had any of the other faith communities raise the same point, which is why we're talking about our Muslim and our Jewish traditions. So let's just consider that as we, you know, see where we're gonna land on this proposal. So we're here because of our students who found it brave enough, they found that inner voice and that strength to come to the board table and voice their opinion.
Thank you, Will, I appreciate that point. I think that I might suggest, just so that we don't leave this hanging, that this has been, as Will just said, an incredibly valuable conversation. I think that I would suggest, Madam Chair, that we take this as an executive committee, back to think about the best next step, obviously not to drop the discussion there. Director Barlow wonder about additional input from various stakeholders. I had Director Whitehorn ask about some data from Paris. So those are very specific possibilities. And so that we might debrief on this conversation and then come back to the larger board with a sense of what proposed next step might be. And of course, board members can, and I know you will, provide feedback to the chair on whatever that possible next step might be, and then can always make a motion in a meeting, should you so choose. But I think, as Will said at the outset of his presentation, the intent here was to hear what's on board members' minds and the things that you're thinking about. And so I know sometimes we have study sessions that frankly, like the one we are about to turn to on world language, that have a pre-identified action point. This one, it was authentically a study session for us to really have, really, since I've been here, the first discussion among board members of this issue, to give us a chance to have some sense of the issues that are on board members' minds as we might move this further. And so I just, I, I agree with Will that it, for, for those of us on the staff, it was a very productive opportunity to hear some of the concerns that you brought. And I think as an executive committee, we can think about the best next step to pursue this further.
And just, so anyone listening or even board members are hearing about timeframes, when are we scheduled to approve the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven?
It's not scheduled.
Do you have a time, like a month timeframe yet? It's not in the next month or two months?
No.
It's a few months out.
Yeah, and-
April, May?
Yeah. And we have a longstanding tradition. Well, there was one that predated me in Rochester, working just with Rochester Education Association on that, which is super important. Since I've been here, we brought the Rochester Principles Association into that discussion. And so we always would convene those two really important groups for their perspective, which may or may not have anything to do with the issues we're talking about here tonight. So I know that one of the things that the chair and vice chair are eagerly awaiting is my proposal for the board agenda in twenty twenty-six, and that is coming together. And so this will be on there. And so we can make sure that this discussion, to the extent that it makes sense, based on the board's preferences, happens before you're being asked to make any kind of formal decision.
But we have time.
Yes, we have time.
Board members, any final input or comments regarding the approach? Director Cook?
I, I just, yeah, I just wanted to tack on to Director Marvin's point, because I, I also agree that canceling school on these days, really, the school district are getting into the business of deciding which religions to recognize in any way, makes me a little anxious. I just, I don't think it's great to be doing it at all. But, but yeah, I mean, for the impact on families, I, I certainly completely agree. And I think this is a very thoughtful proposal. I can absolutely appreciate where it's coming from, and it's an effort to honor the requests of these students. And it's probably doable with two or maybe four days that would be recognized in this way each year. It's just really easy for me to see it very quickly growing to ten or twelve. And, you know, looking at how busy that Quarry Hill parking lot is every single day in the fall and in the spring, if you gotta take ten or twelve days out of that, I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna be, anyway, it's just easy for me to see that happening. So that's my, I think, why I have some qualms here. But appreciate the proposal and look forward to the next steps.
Thank you, board members. Our next agenda item is a prep for action agenda item, the World Languages Plan. The board is scheduled to take action on this item at the October twenty-first meeting.
Madam Chair, may I bring our leaders of this-
Please do.
To the table here? Yeah, let's, we, we, we wanna add some chairs for you, for sure.
Turn it over to him, we're doing it, did you say October twenty? Twenty-first, twenty-one.
So, Madam Chair, board members, it's, I know I don't need to introduce these folks to you. We have Natalia Benjamin, our Director of Multilingual Learning, and Heather Wilman, our Director of Secondary Education, and Martine Heigland, who's a principal on special assignment, really providing valuable leadership in helping us address an issue that has been looming on the horizon for several years. And so we do have a proposal for you now on our world language offerings, that a tremendous amount of work has gone into. The board has already heard, even a couple of years ago, from Natalia on a really exciting vision for world language articulation. But there has been a looming question of specifically which languages we offer based on student preferences and enrollment. So we have the recommendation for you tonight. The last thing I'll say before I turn it over to this great team is that I do anticipate that as part of our new strategic plan, additional creative thinking will happen about the courses that we offer, actually at every level, but especially at the middle and high school level. And so this is a, a near-term proposal that I think is driven by some important enrollment trends that the team will outline for you. I don't think it's the end of the story. I think there are other options to be thinking, especially leveraging technology, about additional study in world language. But we have a decision to make that the team will outline for you here now. So thank you for your work, and we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Pecal. Good evening, members of the board. Oh, am I not? Okay, can you hear me?
It's so that millions can hear.
There we go. Yes, thank you so much, and good evening, everyone, for the opportunity to present the next phase of the World Language Initiative. Together with my colleagues, we've been working on a data-driven, student-centered plan that strengthens our world language programs across Rochester Public Schools. We have submitted a proposal that responds to three urgent needs in the system: declining enrollment in specific world language courses, the need to diversify our language offerings, and ensuring equitable in-person access to world language learning for all high school students. We have listened closely to students, staff, and families, their feedback combined with enrollment data, and our research guided every step of this plan. So this initiative, I'm gonna, because I already just talked about this, I'm gonna move forward. This initiative supports three pillars of our district mission and vision: academic excellence, equity in access, and global readiness. Equity means ensuring that a student can study a language, and global readiness connects language learning to our mission of preparing students to thrive in a multi-interconnected world. And then ultimately, this proposal ensures that our programs serve today's students while building sustainability for the future.
Right, so I'll share a little bit of the historical context. As you know, if you've been around for a while, we tried a couple of things in the past. So we had Mandarin that was offered. We also had ASL previously, and we had some problems with attrition. We had more numbers at the Level One level, and then sometimes it would fall off. We also had pandemic disruptions. So we tried something called, we called it hybrid. And we had teachers that would be online, but they also have students, they travel to the, the sites, and ultimately felt like that wasn't necessarily the best model for either the teachers or the students. And then we also have really struggled with, what's the vision for our world languages? I think there are folks that are in the camp of, it's for college prep, and then there are folks that are in the camp of, it's for communication and connection. And so we've really had to think about, what is our vision, and then how can that help us prioritize where we're going?
So last year, we had a group of parents, community members, students that came together to explore what other districts have done when they're adding a, a new language. This was also shared extensively through different conferences where those districts presented. And so through that work, there were some key findings that they shared with us. One of them was that they studied the results of their CLs, their course by literacy, to identify some of the needs to support students in languages. They also spoke about the, the importance of community engagement. A lot of the requests that came from languages were rooted in community advocacy and community groups that, that were looking at that piece. Where some of the districts have found success was really in looking at the population of students that they had, both of different languages, but also of their staff members that spoke those languages, because that, that spoke to the, to the linguistic wealth that the community had. And so they based some of their decisions on those pieces. I will talk later a little bit more about resources, but those two things were tied together, because then the districts were able to build the, the resources for human capital in, in licenses and supporting those people to obtain their licenses in the languages that were being offered by the district, as well as significant investment in curriculum development and professional development, because oftentimes, the languages that were selected are less commonly taught, and their resources are not as readily available. So those are some of the lessons we learned from other districts. Yes, this one's mine as well. So one of the questions that, that was sent to us was, what was the, the range of the data that was looked at when we looked at the enrollment and attrition? And so the report of the team from last year will show the, the numbers from twenty nineteen to current. So it really is over seven years plus one more year of registration. So it's a, it's, it's a trend of over eight years. And so you can see in the graph, and there's, there's different, different levels, like Heather mentioned, where you may have more consistent enrollment at those Level Ones and Twos, and then some students just choosing not to continue beyond those levels.
And so moving on, to the fact that we did quite a bit of, um, um, research on what it looks like for that course, so like section enrollment reports, and declining enrollment patterns that we saw, and the increasing number of course installations, all of those things. We did gather student perspectives, and so student voice is reflected here, guided this proposal through a district-wide survey. Nearly fifty-five percent of our students said they are interested in taking a language, and what we saw is that American Sign Language ranked at the top emerging choice. Students expressed also strong preference for in-person learning and requested a wider range of options beyond the ones that we offer, such as Spanish, French, German, and Latin. So their feedback somewhat confirmed the importance of variety in our, in our system, cultural representation, and equitable access to meaningful face-to-face instruction. We also have engaged, and Natalia has shared a little bit of that, parent perspective in several ways. Informal feedback through school-based communication went out, and parent inquiries about cost of offerings, particularly around continuity and- particularly around continuity and access to languages. We had a survey input through the District's World Language Stakeholder Survey, Spring 2024. Is that correct? Which included responses from parents, students, and staff. And then, what we want to do now is continue this engagement for our next step pending board support to share the plan broadly, post-community listening sessions during parent-teacher conferences coming up, and gather additional structured input before implementation of the initiative. So, based on enrollment, interest in sustainability, we recommend the following adjustments with the Superintendent's Guidance to phase out Latin entirely starting in 26, 27 school year. Phase out German III and IV, retaining German I and II online to allow current students to complete their sequences. Continue French I and II, advanced levels offered only when enrollment meet thresholds. Continue Spanish IV at sites with sustainable enrollment, explore consolidating advanced sections. These steps will believe balanced student access, staffing feasibility, and responsible resource use. But to clarify, students currently enrolled in Latin will be able to complete their sequence. The proposed phase-out timeline ensures that Latin will be available so that students beginning Latin this year can complete their upper-level courses. After this current school year, Latin will no longer, Latin I will no longer be offered to new cohorts of students. So, again, we will honor the commitment to those currently enrolled to complete their language sequence. Okay, so the student survey identified ASL, American Sign Language, as the clear frontrunner for our new language implementation. And like I said before, we also recognize significant interest in Arabic, Mandarin Chinese, Somali, Japanese, and Korean that reflect the cultural and linguistic diversity of Rochester. The plan takes a two-track approach. Phase out Latin and upper-level German, adjust French and Spanish, and then begin groundwork for ASL implementation as the next in-person program.
I'm doing the wrong thing. I think it's important to name that there's a lot of interest from our students, and we have limited resources to allocate for this. And so, one of the things that Dr. Pikel asked of us is to also look at curriculum availability, but also availability of licensed staff members. So, again, the team that met last spring worked diligently to figure out those pieces. We created a table so that we could rank the languages that the students had already identified as interested to them. And so, we ranked them based on, are there programs that are available to obtain those licenses? Were there curriculums that were available? Were there other technology that was available to support that language learning of the students? And also, available license in the state? So, based on that, we ranked those languages, and then we tallied the numbers for a total, I want to say of 21 points. And so, it gave us an idea of where those resources were currently. One thing that I do want to name is that that data does not show the current work that Minnesota is doing to develop and support languages. One of those is a heritage portfolio pathway through PLSB that they are currently implementing. We have several staff members from our district that have participated and are currently participating in that program. And so, I am saying that because what that means is that when a district wants to develop and support those language that are specific, there are avenues to licensed staff members and to provide those supports so that not only do they have the knowledge to be great language teachers, but also they require licensure so that we can hire them and not have to go through a Tier One licensure, a Tier Two licensure, and have to reinforce those positions year after year. And so, there are great, there is great work that is being done in the world language field to support not only staff to get that licensure, but also to develop curriculum and resources for those languages. Part of that is being done through grants that the Humanity Center is putting out, and also that the Minnesota Department of Education is doing. One example of that is that we're currently partnering with the University of Minnesota and the Humanity Center to develop some lessons for less commonly taught languages. And that's paired with some of the work that happens within the Ethnic Studies realm. And so, there's a lot of parallel work that is happening to build resources that historically haven't been there when it comes to less commonly taught languages.
Okay, so our implementation timeline for world languages, we have, we want to follow this three-phase timeline. We kept it simple for a reason because we know that there might be some different things that we need to consider based on principals and schools and our parent voice and student input. So, this is what we are proposing, Fall '25, which is now, phasing out Latin. This is this proposal, board decision. And then, engage, assess, and communicate with our families. And we have started already the Registration Guide. In the winter, and I apologize, it says Winter 2025, but it will be Winter 2026. Explore design options for ASL, community engagement, curriculum articulation, and materials for training. And as Natalia is sharing, some of that work has been in place already last the previous years. So, we'll just continue. Spring '26, curriculum implementation, professional learning, and new language launch. So, with this timeline, we want to ensure careful planning, community input, and alignment with our strategic priorities. All right. Implementation will be grounded in research across two focus areas. Based, one of them will be the World Language Program Design. That is going to be based on equity partnerships and proficiency-based instruction. And the second one is our ASL stakeholder engagement, where we want to follow up with implementation, learning from other districts, engaging community partners, and non-geneal sustainable model. The goal here is to build strong systems and sustainability plans that can support both ASL and future additions if we so choose.
All right, so there's clear alignment with many of the district initiatives that you've heard about. When we think about post-secondary readiness, we know that our students are much more likely to get jobs if they are multilingual. We also know that communication and adaptability are things that our employers are asking for. We also see a strong connection to deeper learning. When you think about true mastery, being able to speak that language with strong facilities is important and connects to that deeper learning work.
Just like Dr. Pikel mentioned, two years ago, when we worked on the World Language Articulation piece, and really thinking of what high-quality instruction looks like in the world language classroom, and also looking at the 2024 Actful Professional Guidelines that were just published, really thinking of how do we align our instruction to the communicative practice and really getting our students to speak, read, listen, and write the languages, not just necessarily know about the language, but actually language in those specific named languages. And so, any new initiatives for new languages, we want to make sure that they're aligned across the board. And I think that also drives the updating of current languages that we have so that all of those practices are aligned together.
I want to add a personal note to this, that global readiness is really important to me because speaking many languages is something that really makes you come alive in different ways that you don't think about and you don't know. So, that global readiness, not only just develop, you know, students for career pathways and college readiness, but just being able to be bilingual, biliterate, or bicultural when they are in those classes is something that is phenomenal. It's beautiful. Okay, so we are seeking this evening the board's support with Superintendent's Guidance to approve the phased language changes for Latin, German, French, and Spanish. Approve the direction for newest ASL program. Endorse the continuation of engagement with students, families, and staff to refine implementation details. And we believe that these steps will ensure clear communication, continuity, and alignment across all schools. So, we thank you for sharing this time with us and for your continued partnership. This initiative represents a thoughtful, data-driven evolution of our language programs, one that prioritized equity, engagement, and sustainability, and we welcome your questions.
Director Mark, how many students actually took the Student Perspectives survey result? I mean, how many students? We give percentages, but that doesn't help me with, in terms of the numbers of students who responded.
Right.
And what grade levels was this survey administered to?
Thank you for your question. We partnered with Dr. Ruck, Peter Ruck, to help us with that. The survey was administered grades eight to 11. And about, oh, I want to say, 800 to 1,000 students did the survey.
Thank you for all the work you're doing in this. I know it's disappointing to have to discontinue some of the language offerings that we've had. I understand, though, that if students aren't registering, or if you can't get the correct staff, they can't be offered. My specific question about French is that if you can guarantee that students can take French I and II, but not that they'd be able to teach, take three and four, depending on enrollment, is that going to sort of be the death knell for French? If a integrator comes in and says, "I want to have four years of a language," and you're saying, "Well, maybe French, but..."
I don't think so. Actually, we've seen that increase in French enrollment this year. And so, the current model is that we have French I and II in person, and then three and four were combined online. Mayo, I believe, had enough enrollment that they were offering the three and four in person. And so, we anticipate that we'll have enough enrollment to be able to offer that. The online version, it just becomes not sustainable by the time we keep doing that. So, that's why we're suggesting to not do that online, the three and four for French, so that we can focus on those in-person pieces. I think the second part of that is the human capital and making sure that we have the teacher available to teach those courses. So, I don't anticipate that that would hurt the French program in that sense.
Madam Chair? Sure. Excellent presentation, thank you. I remember years ago hearing Latin was a dead language, you know, it's been buried a number of times, but it has nonetheless survived. But I appreciate the data analysis, which was engaged to bring us to this point of discussion and at some point, decision. Often, we're left with our emotions or thoughts based on, well, I remember when I was in middle, well, junior high school back then, you know, languages were required in junior high and even into high school. But that was then, this is now. While there is a interest among, a percentage of our students, we know that not all of our students choose to pursue foreign language. And again, I'm thankful for the thoughtful approach you guys utilized because it gives to me, as a member of the board, the capacity to make an informed decision as I look at the information you provided. My question, two-part question. With the current online offering, are there, are out-of-district students able to participate in our online offerings? And if so, do you know what percentage of students that might be?
I'll talk to the percentages and then I'll let Heather answer the next question. But actually, the percentage of students participating or signing up for world languages online is very minimal compared to the students, let me rephrase that. The students that are participating in our online offerings are really from the Marshall, Mayo, and Centri students. We have very few students that are opting to take those courses from other countries. That they could take it if they want.
They could, yeah.
Thank you. And then, finally, I heard reference to, in terms of trying to, Principal Martine, you had mentioned some effort possibly being expended at upcoming parent-teacher conferences. Can you speak to that a little bit more? I only caught the tailwind, I'm excited to share as to what the purpose of that might be.
Yes, we wanted to have Q and A with parents to, number one, let me back up a little bit, to inform them of the initiative and to clarify what that means for each language courses because we've received some email concerns about what Director Marvin just explained. So, we wanted to have a chance to share with the parents. And then, number two is to get feedback from them about what they would like to see with this implementation of American Sign Language. With ASL, we do have a population of our district who is very familiar with that. And so, we would like to engage to see what recommendations from them would be.
And final comment in response to that. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration. Oftentimes, we, the board and administration, may hear from parents who are reacting to what they may read in a media source, and yet, rather than wait for that, you guys are actually giving the parents the opportunity to get it from not the cat's mouth, but from the mouth of the professionals. And I appreciate that so much because it makes everyone's job easier. And I think parents then will have the opportunity to actually, rather than emotionally process, you know, why, how come, and I thought this, and I thought that, you know, you will give them an opportunity to actually talk, listen to the experts, and see the data. So, thank you for what you're doing.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So, just real quick, so it looks like this is something that we're going to kind of be monitoring because some of these continuation of some of the higher-advanced classes are contingent on enrollment. So, with that, I would hope that there's an assumption too that we'll continue to look at this. Like, American Sign Language is very popular, but should another language be requested? We, I'm assuming we'd be open to looking at that. And then, I guess, from a parent perspective, if you are gung-ho on your child having a certain language, kind of taking off of what Director Barlow say, is there, are there out-of-district options for those students? I don't know, Kate, you know, are there, are we able to give those families clear direction? You know, if you do want to take Latin, could we say, "Well..." direction, you know, if you do want to take Latin, could we say, well, this is a way your child can do that?
So one thing that we did last year, when we were looking at all the options, was almost catalog what's out there. So we looked at the courses that were being taught from other districts. We looked at the courses that universities were offering as high school credits, and we looked at any PSEO options. I guess the short answer is, yes, there are some options, and they are limited in a way. Many of the options that are available are level ones and twos, and I think that speaks to where we're at currently as far as being able to offer a variety of languages because of the enrollment. That would be my guess of why some languages are only offered at those two levels. There are other options that we can look into to sort of guide that one-on-one, and I think as Dr. Pickel mentioned, right, we can look at some things down the line that I hope we can implement for our students. It will require some creative thinking and some implementation and professional development. I also think that as we see the future of world languages and the access that our students have to just immerse themselves in languages, we're going to see the field evolve in less learning about the language and more doing the language.
And I'm sorry, I probably didn't ask the question, but what, how often will we be reviewing this, right? So we have the data, how often will we be reviewing the data? Or is this something where we kind of wait till it dies out? I would hope maybe we could be more, you know, proactive about it if we are, since we're aware that we're having an issue with language, that we would have some kind of monitoring system. I don't know if we look at it every year or every two years, like, how will we measure the success of the removal or the adding of a program?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Whitehorn, for that question. At the next board meeting, the board will be approving, reviewing and approving the Course Registration Guide, which is your official approval of our authority to teach something. And so that is what is, this is ultimately leading up to, including American Sign Language in that guide. The ability of our schools to actually offer the class is dependent on enrollment. And so you're absolutely right, this is a constant, ongoing question. And we do have courses that are in the course guide that our schools don't offer, not necessarily world language, because you don't have enough kids to run the section, in which case, we don't offer it, but it remains in the course guide, it remains an offering. I think we could certainly commit to keep the board apprised of our enrollment numbers on world language. As Natalia just mentioned, there are a number of options that I think we need to do some more homework on. The decision to go online with many of our current offerings was made my first year coming right out of the pandemic. And for some very self-directed learners, online learning can work great. I also spent time in the language labs where we had kids learning in Rochester online who were really not having the kind of vibrant world language experience that we heard about in the task force work that Natalia led a couple of years ago. A kid who is not a self-directed learner, trying to learn a world language totally online, never with, you know, room. So we just have some, I think, important thinking to do about for whom modes of learning other than place-based classroom instruction are really successful. But we need to ask that, not just about world language, but about every subject area. There are certain kids for whom technology-embedded, self-paced learning is very effective. The challenge of moving German, French, and Latin online in Rochester was, unfortunately, it engaged a lot of kids in that kind of learning for whom it wasn't effective, and the kids would tell you. So that's where this effort to bring back in-person language learning has really started to gain momentum. But there is a type of student for whom this kind of learning is very effective, and it opens a lot of possibilities. I want us to do, and we've had a robust discussion about this, I want us to really do our homework, which the team is very committed to do. And so if this is an issue of ongoing interest for the board, I would love to put this on future board calendars and keep you apprised of that. There's a whole exciting movement that I actually really asked the team not to put before the board tonight, because it really deserves a separate discussion of exposing kids to what are often called their heritage language. So learning the language that is their family's linguistic tradition, which they may not actually otherwise have the opportunity. I think that is something that as we get into the exciting work of the next strategic plan, which is really about what we teach, there's an exciting opportunity to think in those terms. But again, we have to remember for which kind of student is fully online learning. And then there's even one layer deeper, which is, is it synchronous or asynchronous? Are you interacting with someone in real time, or is it actually all? Because there's a lot of classes that are proliferating that are totally asynchronous, where the kid is just clicking through screens, watching videos and things. So I would love to, we've mentioned already tonight, it's on me to present the chair and vice chair, and then by extension, the board, with a proposed agenda for the board's work in 2026, that's coming soon. And so if continuing the discussion of world languages of interest to the board, we'd love to put that on and keep you updated.
And just so I'm clear, I'm sorry. This doesn't have any contingency on clubs, though, right? So if there's a group of kids that want to continue with the Latin club, and someone wants to man that, they can, there's other, you know, those avenues are still available.
Yes, we have had...
Clubs need an advisor, but as long as we have an advisor, absolutely, we can do that.
I just wanted to add a couple of things, because access to language learning is something important to consider. And the reason why I wanted to add this is because we, when we're thinking also, and this is not the topic of tonight, but when we're thinking of the language revitalization work that we're doing and access to Dakota Nojibwe in Minnesota, that is something that we can directly connect with the universities and colleges. That is not something that we would have the capacity to lift based on enrollment and interest that we're currently seeing. We are committed to lift the Indigenous Language and Culture course that is in the guide currently that we are expecting to launch next semester. But for more in-depth Dakota Nojibwe languages, for example, we want to partner to offer those as a PSEO option for our students, because we have several tribal colleges and universities that offer that, where it would be a synchronous opportunity, and so those students who have that desire could access that choice. And so being intentional about how do we partner for that option is important. That would be hard to do with everything, language under the sun, because those opportunities don't exist across the board. And I think when we think of how do we engage with adding languages, I think, well, the enrollment drives what we offer at Rochester Public Schools, but I also would love to see a dynamic process where we have those language communities in partnership with us. And I think that's work that we are beginning to do in the English learning world, where we can partner with those communities that are majority language within Rochester and surrounding areas, so that we are in closer communication with them. So if they come and say, hey, we have this percentage of students in our schools, and this percentage of students, and we would love for those languages to be offered, so that we can be in conversation, and then bring those opportunities back to you, so that it's a dynamic process, and we don't have to wait, right, five, 10 years to review what we're doing in world languages. And so I think there are a lot of opportunities to be more responsive to our students' needs and interests.
Director Cook.
So I had a couple of questions here, just on clarifying the recommendation, so I understand it better, and then also, because it's a study session, some more curiosity-driven questions. But first off, on the proposal, I got a little mixed up at one point. Is the proposal to retain German one and two indefinitely, or is the proposal to also phase those out?
To retain German one and two online. Based on the enrollment for German one and two is strong enough that we can retain those indefinitely, as you said.
Okay, but subject to enrollment.
Subject to enrollment.
And I guess that was the other thing, as I was reading through this in my head, and sort of building off of Superintendent's comments just now, I think all of our courses are contingent on enrollment. So is that different in any way, current, in the current state for foreign languages? Like, do we have sort of a commitment that we'll offer French through four, like, regardless of enrollment, for students that want to take it?
Superintendent.
I can maybe speak to that. I think all of our courses are, we look at the enrollment, and I think last year it was close to 25.6 or something like that to offer the course. So the course doesn't run unless we get the kids signing up for it. So I think that's similar. I think world language has been just an area where we've seen that level one and two, and then we see that steep attrition. And so it's a little bit unique in that, but...
But I think we typically try to make, like, or have historically tried to maintain it through, right, because we've operated it every year. So I think while, yes, it's all based on enrollment, I think it's important because it's a potential change in our practice that we name it, so that people are aware. Does that make sense to me? They know that for most classes, but we have typically offered it through four.
Okay. And then, so, yeah, that clarifies it, I think, for me, anyway. Why, I guess, why is the recommendation to continue with German one and two? I know the, and we don't have the enrollment numbers on here, but I know the enrollments well. Why is that the recommendation?
There's enough enrollment that it's, so when we look at the trend and the number of students in level ones and twos, that hasn't changed a ton. And so when you take that level one and two students across all the districts, it's enough to have like a one FTE of a German teacher to run it. And so if the numbers support that enrollment, it doesn't drop at one and two, and so it also gives them that option to keep that language. I would also add that when the Latin and German students did a survey with a group last spring, and asking why, why are you taking this language and so forth, there was a strong heritage of that Germanic language that supported their choice in taking that language. And that explains why that's a solid across the years to keep those two. When we were looking at the language offerings across districts and other places, we discovered, actually, that many districts offer just level ones and twos for some languages, and so that we didn't have to do one through four. And that year one and two is sufficient to meet some of the, some colleges that ask for that requirement, and also, we have enough data to say, if our students are enrolling in this, we don't need to completely get rid of it, because one and two can fulfill both the interest and desire of our students, but also that language requirement that some students are looking for college admissions.
Okay, and...
Superintendent, do you have something to add?
Well, Dr. Cook, it's a very astute question, because the charge to the group actually initially was to retire German two and Latin. And so my agreement to bring this revised proposal really came from looking at the issues that the team just described for you, that we do have a contingent. One possibility is connection to German heritage. I think, as I've been talking to a lot of our high school students, they are relentlessly pragmatic about college entrance, and it's, I want my two years, I'm not taking anything more. They'll tell you, we're in the age of Google Translate, like, pretty soon, I'm not going to need to learn a thing, I can just talk. But they're looking at colleges, so whether it's heritage, culture, or pragmatic, German seems like a good way to meet my, I was persuaded. I think that that will play out, as you were just noting, based on the enrollment trends and where those things go. So that was the pivot that I agreed to from the initial, my initial read of the data was that German was doing slightly better than Latin, but on a downward trajectory as we actually recognized that German one and two was a different creature from German three and four. That was a shift in my own thinking, one of several as part of this project.
Okay. No, that is really helpful. And then the last question, I think, is the interest in ASL, we've seen that in previous board presentations, I know that's been kind of a theme, and I was just wondering if we have an idea of where that's coming from, because like, the interest that you mentioned in Japanese and Korean makes tons of sense to me, just because Japan and Korea are prolific exporters of culture, and language is such a great way to experience culture, and the other languages, I think we can recognize that there's some cultural significance in our Rochester community for some of those. But where do you think the interest in ASL is coming from, and how do you, yeah, just any thoughts you have on that, I'd be interested.
Okay, I think that there is, well, let me say this, I think there might be a misconception that American Sign Language is not a cultural, you know, like a heritage language. And so it is surprising when students want to learn this. So the language is actually gaining prominence in the community, not just like in Rochester, but in the United States, and also because it does help communicate non-verbally, you know, so it becomes like an expressive language that our students are interested in learning and find fascinating. There is also the deaf and hard-of-hearing culture here that we don't recognize, but is very much a part of our district, and that gives them a chance to be visible. And our students who interact with deaf and hard-of-hearing peers oftentimes are signing to them, and I've seen this experientially. So I think that American Sign Language is on the rise, for some reason, in our, to recognize as a cultural, you know, language, because we have communities who depend on that, that kind of non-verbal expressive language.
One thing that I've encountered with communication from parents is when they've asked about ASL, is also, because it is a visual language, it supports our students who might struggle with dyslexia, or who might struggle with other literacy requirements, or very heavily grammatical spelling pieces of other languages. And so the ASL language is very appealing to students who want to language and have that visual interaction, rather than having the paper and pencils. I think it also supports a different way of learning language that other languages cannot offer.
I'll just say, Director Cook, you mentioned, I think, Japan and Korea. I was actually a licensed Chinese teacher in Minnesota and Massachusetts, and so I had some hopes, and they died with our student interest, and I respect that, actually. I was social studies primarily, but I did, I was licensed. And, you know, it was fascinating to see where the number comes, but one of the things that I ultimately said to the team, we have to make a bet here, like when someone starts a business, and we have to recruit students into the intellectual adventure of learning this language and the cultural adventure, and at some point, there's no guarantee that we have to actually, and so for all the reasons that the team just described, from the survey to other things, you know, I was persuaded that this is a good bet, but it'll take a lot of work to pull this off, which is one reason why I've wanted to really focus this discussion on the decision that I hope you'll make at your next meeting about investing in ASL and in essentially, the big other issue is retiring Latin, which I think, as Mona said, I want to amplify. We could have just done, based on enrollment, but it's been a longstanding tradition in Rochester, and so I think it was important to explain it to you as our leaders and do it with some clarity. So that's the decision for us, but there's a lot of other exciting things that I think, to Director Whitehorn's point, might await beyond this decision. But this is a really important decision, because we are going to have some heavy lifting to do to build out the curriculum, find the teachers, and build student interest, and the clock's ticking in terms of meeting the ambitious timeline that Martine walked us through.
I guess that was my final question, was promotion of this, right? If we're adding a language... If we're adding a language, how are we? I know you said there'd be some engagement with parent-teacher conferences, but, you know, how do we prevent from having to continue opening a language and closing a language? And I guess to add to that, with the languages that we are closing, how are we promoting those, or were we kind of just letting them fizzle out, right? Because oftentimes, when you hear back on these things, people go, I didn't even know they still offered that class, right? Because the interest had dropped, so, you know, sometimes you, you kind of end up with this snowball effect, interest has dropped, but, you know, people just feed off of that and, and are unaware of what is actually offered, if I'm making sense? So I, I guess what have we done to ensure that we have been, you know, that we have been expressing that, more so than just, you know, when your kid gets their sheet, do they want to take a language, pick a language? Are we doing anything in district to promote, like she said, for our children to be global? Are we doing anything to promote the, the languages, or are we just, you know, because Latin is a good language? I mean, not that I'm saying we need to have it, but I mean, what are we, how are we bringing this to the students? So not only are they thinking of it as an option, but, you know, we also don't want to be a district where we get down the line, and it's like, well, why don't you guys offer this, because this is a very, you know, good class, and my, my kids need this, you know what I mean? How, how are we? I don't know if I asked the question there, but maybe somebody understood.
Yeah, let, let me just resolve the first part and then turn back to the team. We, I would not be bringing this recommendation if we had not tried very hard to build enrollment in those classes. We tried very hard, but I think to Director Barlow's point, what is it, Latin's a dead language, and now it's killing me, is what some people would say. It, it was wonderful for kids for whom it was passionate, but we just couldn't generate the interest. The same was true of upper-level German. So we really did try both through outreach to families and kids to build that. Even the move to going online was something I did reluctantly. In terms of looking forward for the, the future-looking work on, should the board next week approve the addition of American Sign Language, how are you thinking about that forward-looking task of building student interest?
Well, this is anecdotal, because I was just at Mayo High School, talking with a teacher who's a big champion of Unified, Colin Thomas, who you may have, have met before, and he was just pumped about the idea that this might be a possibility. And he said, I have kids that are going to be ready to really promote with one another what this course is. So I think we're kind of a preview of our, our course guide work next week, but we're trying to do a lot more promotion of, these are the courses, these are the opportunities that you have, and even earlier than high school, because we know that our parents and our students need to start thinking in middle school about what the possibilities are, so that they can kind of see where they're going. So I think those are probably two, two ways that I think we'll promote with students, to students, because I think they listen more to one another, and then also getting the parents in on that.
And as a parent of a student who enjoyed their four years of Latin, for the, for the interest in the language and the classical nature, I also know that there were a number of students who took Latin because of its connection to a potential medical career. But I think in the past few years, we've really increased our direct offerings in courses that include medical terminology. So perhaps for those students who may have taken Latin because they wanted to prepare perhaps a medical school or nursing school, we're offering other opportunities for them to get that knowledge. I don't know whether that led to part of the lack of enrollment in Latin and having them choose a different language, but I think we're upping our offerings in other courses that may have offset some of the interest in Latin. So I feel like there's still opportunities for those students who may have seen Latin as an opportunity to get into medical terminology, but we have those opportunities through our health science careers and anatomy and physiology.
And Madam Chair, I know you're, we're ready to move on, but I know Principal Haglund used to, before she became a principal, used to teach Latin at Centry, and could you share briefly your experience, or what the students were like, their level of interest? I know Chair Nathan just referenced why some were enrolled, but were there any there for the love of the language?
Yes, of course. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for sending me to my past. I appreciate that. Yes, I, I taught Latin in the district for two years, I taught it at Lord High School for five years before that, and it was a wonderful time of my life. I always promoted the language as what you shared, Chair Nathan, something that really increases your ability to do multiple things. It does open a door in the classics for students who wanted to continue with that, and the students were there for the love of the language, even though they would say, well, yeah, I'm going to medical field and I need this, they were there for the love of the language. They, we had field trips, we had trips to Rome, we had several things that were happening that were enriching the students culturally, taking the language. So it's, it is not easy for me to say retire a language that I used to teach, but I do understand the practical reasons behind that. With that said, I, I appreciate you saying that there are other ways that the language is alive. The, for me, any romance languages bring you back to Latin. So French, Spanish, German are being taught, so in, in, by proxy, Latin is alive, because these languages are rooted. You know, Latin is the mother tongue for cousin, German is a cousin, is the mother tongue for Spanish and French and, and many others that we may consider down the road. So yes, thank you so much for that. Yeah, it was for the love of the language.
Board members, any other feedback?
This will be in action, I think, on October 21st. All right, thank you, team, for all of your hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
A Latin phrase, but I.
Walete.
Next item is our A B C D. The current version is in the agenda item, and on the slide, we have our upcoming agenda items. We have a special session on October 21st for our field trip fees, this is also including a public hearing. On October 21st, following the special session, we have a regular meeting with two focused topics, attendance data and initiatives update, and our philanthropy strategy. Our prep for action is the course registration guide and our policy committee recommendations from the October 9th meeting. And then we're taking action on both the language access plan and the World Languages Plan. We have a special session on November 18th, which is our annual comprehensive achievement and civic readiness report, immediately following a regular meeting. We have two monitoring items, the annual inventory of fixed assets and comprehensive achievement and civic readiness, prep for action on the 2026-2030 strategic plan proposal, and action, approval of audit report for fiscal year 2024-2025, and the course registration guide. Any items board members would like to raise for consideration for future agenda? Hearing none. You heard about our meeting through October 21st. We also have meetings on December 2nd, December 16th, and December 16th is our Truth in Taxation meeting. That meeting starts at 6:00 PM as a special meeting. Note the difference in time to be followed by a regular meeting right after. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:27 PM.